Town Prescott Valley Work Studies Session Agenda, November 5, 2020. Call to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Grossman?
Here for now.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor and I?
Definitely here.
Mayor Palgura?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Jumping right into things, I am 3A. Regional Transit Service, Central Yavapai Regional Cares Act Transit Funding, submitted by Norm Davis. Mr. Davis, floor is yours.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. Item you have before you tonight is Upstart Regional Transit Service through the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization. So that's a simple, short, for the acronym. But I think council is aware that there's always been, the transit advocates locally have always wanted a, you know, transit implemented here regionally. Council may recall that there was an implementation plan that was done about 10 years ago, and it's been sitting on the shelf ever since. So CYMPO got funding here and dusted off that 10-year plan and did a transit implementation plan, and this was completed in February of 20, which re-upstarted what a regional transportation plan could be. And of course, that was in February 20, and then in March, I think we're well aware, COVID pandemic hit us. And of course, what came out of that, of course, was the federal stimulus throughout many different things. One of them was that the President did put into action for the CYMPO region $3.5 million available for transit with COVID funding. So we were directed by the CYMPO Board to go explore, to implement that funding here, that we could take the particular implementation plan that was recently completed and start a regional transit plan here in the Quad City area. So with anything like that, this plan didn't contemplate funding being in place. So the CYMPO Executive Board asked that we get a professional consultant to help us, guide us with a little mini study, see if we can implement this funding. So Nelson Nygaard has completed a study, and what we're going to do tonight is Chris Bridges, the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Administrator, he's going to give a presentation tonight with some of the highlights of what that particular study entailed that Nelson Nygaard did that could implement the $3.5 million of COVID transit dollars that came from the federal government. Also in your packet, Council, the presentation was included, but this one-pager they call it, which is a guideline that the study is after is, you know, just a quick cheat sheet of what could be implemented with the funding over a particular four-year period. So that's in your packet. In addition to the report that Nelson Nygaard started in June and got done here that looks to implement that particular funding over a four-year period. So that's all of my presentation materials, and what I'd like to do is call Chris Bridges up to give his presentation a little more about the $3.5 million of COVID transit funding and how it could be implemented in a regional transit upstart program. Chris, it's all yours.
Welcome, sir. Thank you, Norm. Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's good to see you. It's good to see people. It's good to be around people. So Norm did hit on some of the key points there, and I'm going to walk you through what the Simpo Board had asked us to revisit was the $3.592 and change of CARES Act funding, which covers 100% of the operations for transit, and how we could potentially tap into that and stretch those funds to do what we're calling a demonstration project or a pilot program. And as Norm said, we went back to our consultant team. We did about six weeks drafted this plan and just cranked it out. And I do have to thank Nelson Nygaard, our consultant team, for doing a really good job. So this is just a revisit what Norm had talked about. The Transit Implementation Plan update that was done in February was all geared towards pre-COVID world. It was a six-day-a-week, 12-hours-a-day fixed route system with some demand-response in there to get people to the fixed route. And obviously, that's not going to work well when transit ridership across the country and just people not going anywhere in general, driving or on a bus, was way down. So that's why we revisited and went back and came up with this phasing plan. So in general, the fixed route portion of the system would go away from the original plan. It'd be demand-response only. And it would be a combination of a core of vehicles, like small vans, maybe five or seven passenger, to get it going, and then partnering with some local transportation providers. And Dave Segler is here from New Horizons. They are an example of an organization that provides transportation in the region. Taxi companies could be part of this. It could be Uber and Lyft drivers. It could be all kinds of organizations that could be partners in this. In addition to Yavapai College, Embry-Riddle, local businesses, the hospital, and others that could potentially help offset costs and to stretch these dollars even further. It would be open to the general public, so anybody could get a ride. It would be able to support access to jobs. It would be able to access medical, shopping, all of those things. And at different times, you might have different demands for different things. So all the vehicles would need to be ADA-accessible so that if somebody was in a wheelchair or has other special needs, those could be accommodated. So I mean, you can't really see the whole vehicle there, but that would be sort of an example. It's not a full-on bus. It looks definitely like a big van. So it would utilize what's called a share-ride concept. So if I wanted to book a ride, I could book a ride on either a phone app, a website, or make a phone call and talk to a person to book the ride for me. If I wanted to go to the store right now, I would have the ability to book that. They would contact me and say, okay, we'll be there in 20 minutes. Maybe I have to walk to the end of the street. There's no set bus stops. If I'm ADA-eligible, they would actually come to my house and take me directly to where I want to go. So more of a door-to-door type service there. Maybe as I'm riding, and maybe the mayor wants a ride, so before I even get to my destination, we might pick him up and then move along, and then maybe drop me off, and then maybe somebody else gets on. So it's a constant moving of people. And one of the important things to think about this, we actually talked about this with our consultant team, is, well, what happens? And I think Councilmember Schumacher, you asked me this last time, so I wanted to make sure I got it right. What happens if there are no rides and there's not anybody in the vehicle? So they have designated staging places that they would go and essentially wait for a ride to be booked before, so they're not just driving around wasting gas and time and money. And when somebody does book a ride, they're able to dispatch them right away. Like I said, you could book in advance or a same-day travel. And I think that's everything on this one. So the other interesting part of this is what they were calling "ride-hailing subsidy." So to help the system stretch out so you're not having to operate or own or maintain your own vehicles for the worst-case scenario, let's say you have a peak time, or maybe there's an event, or you want to extend the hours of service. The service for this would be planned Monday through Friday to start at 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. But you could partner with local taxi companies, or Uber, Lyft drivers, or New Horizons, or whoever it may be, and send those rides beyond the core of the system or within those peak-demand times to those other agencies and actually book the ride with them. The cost would be maybe a couple dollars more, but the cost that Dave would have to do for a ride with one of his vehicles might cost $25 when we're charging $2 or $3 for a ticket. And this is where the federal money comes in. The federal money helps make up that difference to cover the cost of operating that we would send over to Dave to provide those rides. The travel would be restricted within those zones. And what I had on the map, and I'll get to it, back to it here in a second, is, I'm just going to jump to it. So if you're in Prescott Valley, you can travel within Zone 1. That would be year 1. Year 2, Prescott Council is willing to consider partnering up with the town. So if they do join, that opens up Zones 2 and 3. And then 4 connects the two areas. Now, there's considerations here. I will say, this is a plan. This is not exactly what your system would end up looking like. It's all going to be reliant on, there would be an issuance of a request for proposals. You would have a transportation provider submit, and you would probably then hammer out the exact details. But you would use this as the basis of what you're advertising and asking for. It could be flexible. You might get a provider that comes back and says, hey, I've got an even better way and it's cheaper. Or, you know what, your numbers are a little off, but I have another idea on how we can move this around. Service levels, obviously, in year 1 would be up to the town council because you would be the one starting it if you do vote to do that. And with that, I mean, that's the basis or basics of it. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor, you want to start us off?
Couple of curiosity questions. Why, what is the reason, which I know there's a good one, that Prescott isn't going to come all in and we're all going to work on this together the first year?
So there's a couple of things. For them, it wasn't, it's not the right time right now.
Why?
You'd have to ask them. Secondly, this, going this route, actually expedites the process because a local government needs to be what's called the direct recipient of the federal funds. And this is a way that the town could actually pursue that right away without having to go through a planning process, writing a new IGA, forming a joint-power organization. So it probably speeds us up by another six to eight months just by doing it this way. Then we can bite off that next step of what does that JPO look like? And when I say joint-power organization, to give you an example, Simpo is a joint-powers organization. So it could be something that we could partner with the town and help you run it, but you would have to be the recipient of the funding, or the county, or the city, or whoever just chooses to do that, but the MPO cannot do that.
What is going to happen to the businesses that we have the voucher system with, the private businesses?
Well, that's what I was mentioning here is like, I've already talked with, I believe I got a call from-
I just want a lot of clarity.
Yeah. I got a call from one of the owners of Classic Taxi. They could easily be part of this system.
Right. And I just want us to hit that fact very strongly. That we were criticized, and that's been clarified, and I just don't think we can put it in big enough letters or say it enough.
Right.
So let's say someone does want to ride on a bus route, and let's just give it a pinpoint area, let's say it's Spousen Robert Road, and they want to get to the doctor's appointment somewhere on Florentine. The normal bus route would not necessarily be there, correct?
Right. It's all based on an algorithm, and don't ask me to explain how it works.
Okay, so let's say that, let's say that they're used to riding the bus for where they normally go, and they go from maybe that area to grocery shopping, and then the bus route does go that way. I know a lot of people maybe are not tech-savvy, per se. Is the bus driver able to order the other part where the patronage could then get to where they need to go?
So the driver wouldn't be the one doing it, but when that rider were to make an arrangement to be picked up, because I'm going to go down the path of, they've probably made a phone call.
It's not all automated, then? They're actually speaking to a person?
Yeah, so they would talk to a person, and they would say, I want to go to Fries on Glassford Hill. And then that person who's talking to them, they would say, well, obviously, you're going to need to get home. So they could book in advance and say, okay, well, how long do you think you're going to be at the store? Maybe they padded a little bit because sometimes it takes forever to get out through the checkout or whatever, right? So that way, they're not left there. It's not, they're not stuck because they don't have an application on a cell phone, and they can still get back.
Ice cream's not melted.
Correct.
That's what I was worried about. Thank you.
Councilwoman Grossman?
Yes. Who's going to be handling the accounting and the auditing of the funds?
So as the direct recipient, whoever that is, they would be the ones that would be responsible for the accounting. Right.
So, thank you, Chris, and welcome, Mayor Protem Orr. We're glad you're here. So I have a couple of questions. Can you talk a little bit about the benefits? I think it was on your slide 2 where it talked about job generation, economic impact, air quality, all that kind of back way, please?
Right. So the system itself creates jobs. You have to hire drivers. Those could be local people. You have to buy gas. You have to buy tires. You have to maintain these things. You need mechanics to do these, right? You need somebody to administer the system. Now, if it's a private company that does those things, they're probably going to bring some of that administrative with them, and not necessarily that's going to be somebody local. But you are purchasing local products to put on those vehicles to make it run. They need a place. So that's just the system itself. The American Public Transportation Association did a study, and it's, in general, it's an economic impact analysis. So every $1 you invest in transit, they say, brings back $4 into the community. So that's like the whole collective. That's people being able to get to work, now making more money, spending more money, the system itself operating. Maybe they're getting to places to buy things that they weren't before. And I'll steal the line from Ron and Sherry Romly. Even if somebody's going to the doctor's office, they are still spending money, right? It's not always just going and buying goods and services at Walmart or Target or wherever you may be going. So that's, the economic reach is big. But it also would have, in theory, once you get to a bigger system, like Flagstaff is 2.3 million rides, right? Those are people not driving around in single occupancy cars. I get it, there's a university there. But it does, every person that's riding on there is potentially taking a vehicle off. Now, they may not have a vehicle, so that's the other side of it. They may, this may be their only form of transportation that, in order for them to get around. So, yeah, it can help with air quality. And I think we talked last time about, could the vehicles be electric? I think they could. You get into, you might need more vehicles because you have to be able to charge those things, and that just takes a lot of time.
The other interesting thing on this slide is the statistics that 49% of transit trips are to reach employment and 6% are for students. And so I would think, at least here in Prescott Valley, the first year that the student number will be much higher than 6% because our kids will get used to using it, the high school kids and what have you, maybe. And then the jobs will come up later in the years, especially as we're able to go, they're able to go a little bit farther into Prescott. And then on the map here, I would sure like to see our Zone 1 go on the other side of 69 because that's where some of our jobs are, back there on First and Second Street.
Right.
And then also incorporate westerly towards Home Depot, Hobby Lobby, and then even Sprouts in that center. So that's my request, if we can. And even skirt the south side of 69, like all the way to Little Dealer for job generation and all of that. So we're talking about demand response, and I know that's not the normal system that's in the big cities where you see the buses and all of that. Is just demand response working elsewhere?
So it's all over, not just the country, but other parts of the world.
Okay.
And obviously, on different scales. This would be very small, but this would be the first one of its kind in Arizona for a purely demand-response-only public transit system. Dave would probably argue that he is also on-demand because you do have to call and reserve a ride. Yeah, okay. Correct. But, yeah, this would be a unique thing for the state of Arizona.
Chris, can you touch on the school, Yavapai College? Have you spoken to them?
I did. I actually gave a presentation to Dr. Ryan and a couple of the others. Rodney Jenkins was in there, and they're very supportive. I did actually bring up money. I didn't get a dollar amount, but did suggest that, you know, if there was a financial partnership with Yavapai College, you know, maybe a trade-off could be their students show a student ID and they get the ride for free. Or they get registered into the system through the college somehow. That's a benefit. I did have that conversation with Dr. Carlson, with Embry-Riddle as well. Unfortunately, I think we had that conversation back in January, so I haven't had a chance to talk to her since. But also had the similar conversation with Yavapai Regional Medical Center. So we've been probing that as a very important part of leveraging local businesses, schools, whatever we can do. I know Finley Toyota had expressed when we were going through our original plan, like, hey, we'll wrap a vehicle and pay you. I don't care. You know, we'll do two. So I don't know if they're still open to that, but it's definitely something worth pursuing.
And for those that are not familiar with NACOG and the voucher system, compare those that ride NACOG, who would be excluded to ride this?
Nobody would be excluded. Everybody would be allowed.
Everybody would be able to do that. ADA-accessible, be able to go right to their house, take them right where they needed to be.
Yeah. Now, if it's me, yeah, they might say, hey, go down to your corner.
Which is what we, Council is already doing that.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, I take exception to the fact that you're saying that there is no demand response in Arizona. I would suggest to you that Prescott, Prescott Valley, started the first demand-response system back about 10 or 15 years ago when City of Prescott was part of a voucher program that today we still have. And we are still funding a voucher transit program. And I'm not seeing the difference, I mean, there's some detailed difference, but it would be real simple to take the CARES money if Council was inclined to start going down that path and supplement the voucher program and supercharge that. Quite frankly, because it incorporates social service, transportation vehicles, it includes the private sector taxi system, and it's already in place. We are already funding it. Now, secondarily, my concern is that, once you start going down this path, Chris, and we've had this conversation before, that you can't cut it off. Now, there is no question, if we spend $3.9 million in the Quad City area, or in Prescott Valley for that matter, that's really nice. It is a shot in the arm to the economy of the Quad City area, okay? That's CARES Act money. I would submit to you that the federal government has already done that when they ended up giving people $1,200 stipends with CARES Act money, okay, to help through the pandemic, okay? And did that give a shot in the arm to the economy of City of Prescott and Town of Prescott Valley? Absolutely. Now, you talk about $3.9 million. I can show you that we generate that much over four weekends of softball tournaments in this community in terms of sales tax collection, okay? I am really not too awful excited about taking a $3.9 million handout and then after three years, having to pick that tab up ourselves, unless there is a new source of revenue that is identified by the voters of Prescott Valley, which is what historically has been the position of this council, which is, we will build the grandest transit system you could ever imagine if the voters dedicate a new revenue stream to do that. This is a really nice way to go ahead and act as a catalyst, but at the end of three or four years, we pick up the tab because you can't stop the service.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Chris. So I was glad that you mentioned your conversations with the colleges and YRMC and Finley and who knows whoever else because that can be counted towards the money that we're leaving on the table each year for the 1.2 million that we get, which can help extend the four-year process. So that could be matching money, correct? And also, anytime our staff spends, anytime your staff or you spend, can all be counted as matching, correct?
Some, yes, some, no. Depends which staff. But to grow on that thought there, storage of the vehicles, if there's the ability of the system to store their vehicles at a town facility, that counts as soft match. So it's not cash. It's whatever that square footage of the space and time taken to be able to store those vehicles. Any donated services can count towards a soft match and not go towards the cash.
Right. And then you talked about a board. So in the first year, does this council act as the board until we form the JPO?
Correct.
Okay. And then direct recipient would be us, which is better than it was, like you said, when I listened to some of the Simpo meetings when we were going to have to use ADOT and pay them $100,000 or more out of our money. So I like that idea. And then, so we're the direct recipient, but then with regard to management and who the GM reports to and all of that, that's- GM reports to and all of that, that's something we could even contract with you with Simbo on, right?
Potentially, yeah. There's, there's already an existing IGA in place that the town and the city and the county work under that is Simbo. So that could be something that if the Simbo board agreed, you know, I can't speak on their behalf, but if they agree, that's something that we could do as part of our service to you.
Just kind of build on then, when potentially Prescott might be interested in.
Right. So, yeah, so if, so if it ended up, Prescott joins and the town and the city are working together, there could be like an offshoot, separate board under the MPO, where the MPO staff is also handling hosting of their minutes and, you know, hosting the meetings and doing all that stuff, and, and doing the day-to-day of that board. But that board would be making the service recommendations and decisions.
So there is an escape clause after the, when we do our RFP and we find a vendor, we would have like a two-year contract or a three-year contract. And, and so there would be an escape clause to, to get out of it if we don't find a future funding source, although it would be very unpopular. So I understand what our town manager's saying.
Correct, yeah.
That would be something we deal with.
Yeah, the, the concept in the plan is a, a three-year contract to start with one year renewals. And, and this is why you call it a demonstration project. You're, you're trying to demonstrate that it actually works. If it doesn't work, you stop the contract. I'm sure the contractor would probably be looking at it saying, well, this isn't really working for us either. So they have the ability to back out of it as well. That's, that's the thought.
I really liked your idea of doing the RFQ or RFP or RFO or whatever, RFI, and, and getting information back that they would study what the people have put on paper and they may have a better idea because they have long-term experience. I like that.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, I'm trying to understand this map. Quite frankly, most of our medical services are in Prescott.
Correct.
Like clear out on crossroads, Willow Creek Road.
Mm-hmm.
There's a fatal flaw here with all of that.
That's the benefit of, if the City of Prescott were joining in year one, right?
I, I personally, the majority of my doctors, I travel all the way over there.
Right.
And I'm just really concerned about that. This isn't going to meet the needs of, of a large percentage of our citizens.
Right.
And I have a real serious problem and concern with that.
So this is where the council, in year one, having the, the ability to make those decisions. If you wanted to, you could put in your service plan that if somebody's using this for medical purposes to get to their doctor and their doctor happens to be on Willow Creek Road, and the council chooses that they want to fund that, you can do that. What, what you wouldn't want to go down the path of is, well, now we're in Prescott, so let's just start picking up everybody in Prescott. So it would be more of a scheduled 24-hour in advance, or whatever you wanted to, to be, to say, hey, this day at this time, I have a doctor's appointment. I need to be picked up at this time and picked up at this time. And, and you can do that. Now, realizing what Council Member Hunt was saying, yeah, the, the job access of any new transit system isn't really the, the emphasis at the get-go. That comes in later as the system grows and becomes more popular, and people begin to realize where it's going, how it functions, that it works for them. But the immediate one is going to be more of a, a shopping activity or a medical activity. I can tell you, just on my street, there are three ladies that really shouldn't be driving very much, and they don't like to drive. And I've already had conversations with them about this. They would love to see it. But that's just my one little street, and I live in Prescott. So this wouldn't necessarily serve them right away.
Our neediest, needs aren't going to be met, and that's hard for me.
Yep.
That's really hard for me, because I'm that age group. Any week, I could not drive again. And I have to think about all of them out there and do the right thing for them, and which will eventually be the right thing for myself.
Right. Counselor.
So is there another area or another town where this is already being modeled? Like you said, there's not any in Arizona, but where else would?
Right. I, I just attended the Arizona Transit Association Conference, and there was a presentation on exactly this. It actually was our consultant giving the presentation. So they're happening all over. I think Arlington, Texas was one that I mentioned when I was here last. Dallas does a hybrid, but there, there are smaller cities and towns. And unfortunately, I left all my papers sitting on my kitchen table that have all those cities and towns on there. I'd be happy to share it with, with Larry and Norm, and they can get it to you. But they did put together a list. Actually, I think it's in the, in the study that's in your packet. But there are similar size, if not a little bit larger, across the country that are doing something like this. This is becoming more popular because of, kind of, I think what we had talked about before is not driving around with empty vehicles.
And big ones, right?
Correct.
And then, do you know how many vehicles, let's say for just Prescott Valley on Phase One, if we were to do that, how many vehicles would we be anticipating?
So Phase One would start with one.
One vehicle?
Yes. But you would also be able to partner with, like we said, the taxi companies and other transportation providers in the area to help.
So Chris, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just, so the bus or the, the shuttle's picking up a two people, three people doing a route. And then all of a sudden, the phone clicks on and three people now want to get on.
Right.
And, but the bus route is already either too far away or going a different route. Then Plan B kicks in. Am I correct in my understanding of this?
Correct.
And Plan B could be Mr. Sigler, perhaps. It could be a taxi service. It can just go down the line of an on-call service and say, hey, we need you to now go over here and pick up this person. They need to head out. And that's going to be an agreement that the board would have with those individuals, whether it's Uber, Lyft.
Doesn't matter.
Other groups.
Yep, exactly.
And there's no, it's unlimited.
Yep.
In numbers. Because we have six, seven people on this queue.
Correct. But, but your core of the system, that main van, it's planned to have one to start. Now, the reality is, is like you were saying, a lot of those demands for, for medical trips aren't going to be in Prescott Valley. That is something you would have to debate. And maybe you do need a second vehicle, because I think, Mayor, we talked about before, is what happens if your, your one vehicle is taking somebody to their doctor on Willow Creek Road, but somebody wants a trip in Prescott Valley? What happens? Well, you would need another vehicle, or you book that trip to their doctor appointment with Dave or somebody else, and to, to be able to make that happen. So you keep your core vehicle in the, in the main zone.
And I think we're all in agreement that if someone has a doctor's appointment, they know weeks and months in advance.
Correct.
It's something they would schedule. And it would be something that we work out. I'm sure Mr. Sigler, I think, I believe he has a 24-hour notice, I think, to get picked up and do things. So they're almost two separate beasts when it comes to that. Someone who's like, oh, I need to go to the store and get groceries, versus, I know next month on Tuesday at 11 o'clock, I need to be at a doctor's appointment.
Exactly. They're very different.
And then later at a different time, how many more would we anticipate being in a full-time route?
For just in Prescott Valley?
Mm-hmm.
So I want to say in year two, it's obviously going to be dependent upon how the system's performing. So let's say it's performing well. It might not, you might not even get to year two. You could see the demand is, is bigger than we think. You might go ahead and say, well, we're going to need to bring in another vehicle now. So you're probably going to be growing each year as the system grows. If it doesn't grow, then you don't get more vehicles. So it's really hard to guess, but you know, you could see three or four vehicles in the future that are dedicated just to Prescott Valley.
I was just also thinking something like special events, like when President Trump came to this area. And if we had a bus route, that would also include something like that. You could jump in on that. But that would also be after hours that are normal and/or weekends, or something like that. I know a lot of the people who visit this area like to get out on a Saturday and go shopping downtown Prescott. And, you know, that's where my thought was too, if somebody wanted to hit the bus system, but it would need to be a little more regular and with a lot more, more vehicles to be involved.
You have a very good point. And I failed to mention, you know, Monday through Friday and, and to start, to get it going. But then Saturday would be an expansion. And then you could also tap into the, you know, the taxi companies and others, like we've been saying. And maybe they provide the weekend service.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Packer, do you have anything? Councilman? Vice Mayor, you have anything else?
It, it's, it's scary. Wonderful opportunity, but it's got lots of scary pieces. But we have to fight our way through them.
Well, I'll tell you exactly what I believe it was Supervisor Brown said, who's on the Simbo board, when I said, we're, we're getting $3.6 million. He said, we'd be idiots to turn it away. Let's see what we can do. Now, if we decide that, that we're not going to use it, that's fine. It's just, it goes back into a statewide pot and it'll go somewhere else in Arizona. That's, that's just it. But, but I just kind of wanted to, you know, add on to what Larry was talking about. So yeah, it's CARES Act money, but it's only for general public transit. That's it. And the voucher program, as great as it is, and as long as it's been around, you have to meet eligibility requirements. There are limitations. You cannot use general public transit money without a general public transit system on a voucher program. And, and believe me, I, I asked, because Norm, Norm got ahold of me and said, hey, is there a way that we can use this on this and, and ramp this up? And I pushed on our FTA representative, and he said, absolutely not. Unless you have a general public transit system, then you can. So you could still have the voucher program, and you could still serve those clients exactly as you do today, if that's what you wanted to, on this system.
Well, as you know, that's a hard piece for me. I've
Yep.
Been a proponent of the voucher system for many, many years, and I'm just really worried about those people.
Yeah.
That they cannot get where they need to go now. And that's real.
Oh, I agree 100%.
And so that's very difficult. I mean, I, I've been part of making sure they could get over to Willow.
Chris, where's the, give me a situation where the Vice Mayor's concerns happen. Like, when does, when does someone not be able to get to a doctor's appointment by calling on-demand to their door?
Right.
And setting up an appointment.
So if everything's hunky-dory and this is all running the way it is on the map, all the zones are up and running, you're not going to have a problem if you live in one of those zones. If you live outside of the zone, that's going to be an issue. Maybe you have to expand it. That's something to, to, to consider. But really, it's covering all of the residential area of Prescott Valley right now on that Zone 1. You could make it even bigger, and, and it doesn't cover, obviously, Viewpoint and Pronghorn, but you could expand it out to that if that's what you needed to do. There is flexibility in this. And I, you know, this is what we always get as transportation planners. The second they put a line on a map, that's it, right? These are flexible. These are just concepts to be able to prove that it can function, that you, you could stretch this money. Obviously, it's, it's your decision if you wanted to try to move forward with this or not. And I'm here, Simbo's here to support you, if that's what you choose to do.
Councilman Anderson?
Okay, we're looking at, I, I noticed you're funding dollars per year. But then I'm hearing that if we have one van that's taking someone to Prescott, and then we've got 10 people that call up and want a ride, that we're going to send taxis out to pick them up. And I assume then now the dollars that are paying for this are coming out of these dollars from the CARES Act. So if this decides to happen every single day, we're going to use up that $3 million faster than four years.
Right. And you probably would use your own vehicles. To, to your point, you would probably expand and have more vehicles dedicated to the system.
And that's going to cost more money out of that $3 million.
Correct.
And then the administration to run this process is going to cost more money out of that $3 million. So if the system picks up, which we would certainly hope people would take advantage of it, because there'd be no point in doing it if they weren't using it.
Correct.
It could get out of hand in a hurry, and we could use the money up very quickly.
Yeah, if it's overwhelmingly popular, yeah, you're, you're going to increase the level of service and that just costs more money.
So if this is something that we really feel we have a need for, then it certainly would be used. Otherwise, we wouldn't be even talking about it.
Yeah, the, through the Transit Implementation Plan, you know, that was a stakeholder-driven organizations and individuals, elected officials from all over the region participated in that. And we, our last meeting was in this room, because we didn't have any other room big enough to hold the amount of stakeholders that were there saying, we want this. And so it, it's, it's really hard to say. Like, maybe it doesn't work. We don't know. We have a lot of, well, maybes and it coulds and optimism of maybe there are 10 people at one time, or maybe there's nobody on that day. Like, we don't know for sure. Now, I'm sure Dave could tell you, he's got plenty of demand. He was telling me about his ridership.
Dave, why don't you come on up here?
From earlier this, this evening.
Of course, people will be.
I know I keep mentioning him. He should talk.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity. Did you have a specific question you just want me to?
No, I, I believe, I saw you had some data there. If you just want to share briefly with us, what you're looking at?
I thought it was important to bring some information. First of all, we are the Disability Empowerment Center. We're not a taxi company. We just happen to have currently 26 buses and vans on the roads of Prescott Valley and Yavapai County. Currently, I'm running, right now in COVID, about 45,000 miles a month. I am giving rides to about 2,700 people, individuals going to their doctors, going to Prescott to see their doctors or Prescott Valley. In fact, I have one client who needs to go to Benson to see their specialist once a month. We'll take care of that. That's what we do. And we do it with a lot of vouchers. We run out of those vouchers two, oh, I, I know, two weeks in. And, and we get the, the greatest number of those. We're the largest transportation company in the county. And, and we utilize those. It's a fabulous program, and it solves a lot of needs. There's a lot of needs that go unmet. And, and we take up those things too. In fact, one year, we gave rides to everybody who asked, even when the voucher system ran out. And we came back and showed that we had twice as many people served as the voucher program at the time was serving. Although, that's a lot of people you're serving now. A lot of people. I'm not complaining. But we are doing 2,700 people a month that we're giving rides to all over the county. Pre-COVID, that was 4,000 to 5,000 with about 70,000 miles a month. Now, with the implementation of transit, we're going to lose a lot of that clientele. Thank goodness. We're going to get people to their, to their jobs, to their doctors, to, to, to whatever's going on, to visit Aunt Sally. And we want to be a part of that. We've, we've been a part of this process since the beginning. My very first year, I, I, I gave every spare moment to this idea, because of the 4,000 people that we serve a month pre-COVID, there's not a single one of them who can deal without this. But there's so many more who would need this. I have a daughter who attends Yavapai College. She doesn't have a bus system to, 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 to get her there. I had to buy her a cheap car. Her boyfriend is an Embry-Riddle student. He has no car. So she's transporting him. We have a, a desperate need here. And organizations like ours are happy to throw in, will work. In fact, our programming, our computer program, which is a billion-dollar deal, it handles our 24-hour advance, but it also handles the direct response. So right now, I just flip a switch on my computer and I can map out all of my vehicles, where they are right now. And we can swerve out of the way to pick somebody up and get them where they need to go. That's what this is about. Other organizations like mine are eager to jump in, and it's going to be a good thing for taxi companies. It's going to be a good thing for nonprofits. It's going to be a great thing for the citizenry of Prescott Valley and Prescott, and eventually Chino. If you look at the, the amount of traffic that we generate between the, the three cities, it's ungodly. I, I don't let my drivers go on 69 after 3 o'clock. They got to go the, the, the long way, because that's the most dangerous stretch of highway in Arizona. We, we can help that with this plan. And if we say no to another $3 million sitting on the table, $4 million sitting on, on the, the table, I think, and I, and I speak for the disabled population, I think that's the, the wrong choice.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Counselor, anything else for Mr. Bridges? Councilwoman?
May I ask Dave a question? Dave, I'm not real familiar with your program, but I'd love to learn more about it someday. How do people qualify for rides with your system?
They have to be disabled according to the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Okay.
Those standards and guidelines, which are, in short, very simple.
Okay.
If you are wearing glasses, you are probably disabled. You are not completely disabled. We help everybody on the full spectrum. We help everybody on the full spectrum. So very few people get told they don't qualify. In fact, I can't think of people who get told they don't qualify.
And do people pay you?
Some people pay us. Sometimes they use NACOG vouchers.
Okay.
Sometimes we are contracted with medical providers. For instance, we take people to Southwest Behavioral Health to take their dosing weekly, daily. So a lot of that would also be handled by a bus system for a lot less cost.
Thank you, sir.
And people can learn more about it on Council Chat, I believe, next month. Mr. Sigler was one of my guests, so.
I just want to ask Dave one more question, please. You mentioned that there are possibly other organizations similar to yourself that do this. Do you know what that number is?
If we don't count the taxi companies, I would say a dozen or so. There's, Chris Bridges may be able to answer it better. We sit on a committee of many of those providers from the NAU, People Who Care. Help me out, Chris. You have a by regional transit?
Churches.
All right. It's good to know that there's a nice number of vehicles out there that are made available and then this program would definitely work and they can make it work.
No, I don't know if Chris is going to get mad at me for saying this, but many of, most of our vehicles, we bought through an ADOT grant process that may be applicable here. I spend between $5,000 and $6,000 for a brand-new nine-passenger minibus. That's worth about $68,000. ADOT pays for the rest of that. I only pay the five or six, which means when you buy a new bus for the town, that's $6,000 and not $70,000. And of course, what he says about people wrapping and putting their logos on your vehicles is something that we're pursuing now. That's a real thing. People will pay some good money for that. And again, my vehicle's put on between 40,000 and 70,000 miles a month. So it's a good add and it would be a great add for the town, the town's vehicle. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anything else? Mr. Bridges, anything else to add?
Nope. But if you have any questions, feel free, let me know. I'm pretty sure you all know how to get ahold of me.
I believe, I think it's something that's important to our community and I think it's important for the council to be able to make that decision for years to come. And with a new council getting seated next month, it's probably fair for them. This council will look a lot different come January. And I'd welcome you back to council in January for a vote to see whether or not this is something we wish to pursue. In the meantime, we'll advise the new council members to reach out to you and hopefully you can speak to them and have some questions.
Yeah. Feel free, share the information. You've got all that. It's posted on our website, cympo.org, that, you know, anybody wants to go and download it and read it if you're having trouble sleeping at night. I recommend it.
So yes, so we'll welcome you back in January.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
And just think, Chris, you won't have to put up with me.
I will always have to put up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're such a gentleman.
Mr. Davis? Where'd he go? Moving on to item 3B, street name change for Nez-Ze Sunway.
All right. Smart aleck. No.
Take your time, sir.
You'll pay for that, Norm.
Now, this is the road down to the sewer plant. Is that correct?
So Mayor, hopefully I don't break anything here. Item we have before you is the Northern Arizona Suns name change. We brought this to council a couple times because as we talked with council at the August 20th work study, our Northern Arizona Suns left us and we were left with a road that probably didn't fit. So we had some public input that it'd be nice to change that particular name. So what we did was that back in September, we had some proposed roadway name changes that I think we're well aware of, that these particular five roadway names were proposed to change that segment of roadway at the event center, basically from Glassford Hill to that first intersection at Main Street. And we've been over this before. You're looking at the same slides that you saw back at the work study in September and also. What we did discuss was that we started a media campaign to let the residents weigh in on what they would like that name change to be. So what you're looking at is an excerpt from the September Town News that asked residents to go ahead and pick one of those five names, what they would like to see the roadway name change to be. So we had a poll and we actually closed the particular poll and voting on October 1st. And as you can see, that those were the five names. And as you can see, the highlight of one, Veterans Way, from the polling from the residents of Prescott Valley. You can see the results of that particular polling. This is what was sent from the media, Heidi and Latoya with our media group. I had several media outlets, whether it be email, voting, the Q way with your smartphone. Those are the voting results as you see there. So out of 730 votes received, you can see the top vote getter was Veterans Way with Arena Boulevard being a very close second. So what I'm here today is presenting those results, but really getting council feedback of, here's the voting results and have a discussion about things.
I don't have any questions in regards to this. I think it's, it was great that we involved the community. Latoya and Heidi did an amazing job reaching out. And unlike our current political climate, I think the people have spoken and it's pretty clear.
Let's put her up.
Well, what I did was, we wanted to hide it. So what staff has done is we did disguise the roadway name sign until the council. The two names you're seeing here, probably the most recognizable names, I think. Their names are on everything. After, I think, reading each of everything, we thought we'd disguise the roadway name. But what I can do for you tonight is, this is actually the roadway name sign.
They're having way too much fun.
Yeah, and if we do this right, well, keep in mind, they like to give you a little jazz. G.I.S. gotta help me play. This is the sign that we ordered. And this is actually the roadway name sign that will go in the existing sign house on Glassford Hill Road. I'm not doing too well.
It's wiggling on him.
Just don't let me cut you with this razor.
Yeah. I'm wondering where the Band-Aids are. There you go.
Oh my gosh, you're killing me.
That's why you're killing him.
You ever hear the story about the five guys?
Ivan isn't even here.
Maybe he knew about this.
Well, I think we should plaster it in his office so he doesn't miss out.
There you go.
I think that's a good idea.
Here's our unveiling, Mayor.
Oh, nice.
This is actually the sign that fits into the lighted box. And so they're bigger than Veterans Way.
Nice.
So we'll order a few more of these.
And it's reflective.
So there's our roadway, new roadway name sign. So the process from here for an agreement on Veterans Way is that through our Community Development Department, Richard Parker's group, we do have to pass a resolution and that will come in an upcoming council meeting to pass a resolution, to officially adopt it. Because obviously for 911-type response and addresses are a big thing. So we'll make sure we do that right. But we'll do that in a public forum. But we've got to have a little bit of fun with the voting and this is what we'll put into place.
Unlike Facebook, unlike a lot of memes on Facebook, you can spell.
We did do that right. We did double-check that, so.
Thanks, Norm. I believe you're up here for 3C as well?
Yes. Item number 3C. Let me click one more. Council may recall that we came to you here last month, October 8th work study, that we do apply for the flood control dollars for Prescott Valley. And we do get funding every year to put into place flood control dollars towards, obviously, flood control projects. We can use it towards projects and studies. So we get funding every year and through an intergovernmental agreement with Apopio County, we make proposals as staff and get that endorsed by council. And council may recall that this year's funding was $125,000 and the IGA has been completed. We did make a couple recommendations as staff and what we could use that money for. And this particular exhibit is what we've talked about in the past, what we've used flood control funding for and what we proposed this year. So it wraps it up pretty well. And this exhibit does a great job that this year's $125,000 funding with the particular item you have before you is that we're going to use $40,000 to remap some of all the work we've done over the last five years of stormwater channel improvements. So if you look at the exhibit you have there, that viewpoint corridor, you can see in '16, '17, and '18, we took four years of design and also construction to put that particular floodplain, you know, that meanders over the natural terrain, where we actually dug a channel. It was engineered to take a particular 100-year design storm. So what you do is you take that natural terrain in an urban area and you put it into a particular channel. In addition, you can see the new viewpoint connector. We've done some channelization there. You can see where the blue is depicted there as part of that new roadway construction. Likewise, it has to be re-studied when you move the channel or constrict it, move it. The biggest thing that it will do, so we'll do the whole corridor from Spouse all the way up to the Roundup intersection. If you see, the reason those box coverts are depicted there, those are the box coverts we just got done constructing. We talked about, aggregate, there's about $3.5 million worth of flood control structures put in in addition to channeling those box coverts. So if you see up there, where you see those little bitty purple box coverts delineated, what the particular mapping and studying will do was remap that floodplain and show that that water does get collected and run underneath the particular box covert. So all the engineering's been done, but what we need to do is do the engineering on the post-design because FEMA says, okay, you got a good plan. Make sure you build it per the plan. And once you build it, then we'll change the maps. So it's just a matter of, you know, procedure. So what you have before you is a particular proposal to use the money through an amendment through the town general agreement, working with line engineering also as a subcontractor, to remap the new floodplain, to put all that particular floodplain into the new channels we built. And I just want to reiterate, and we're going back as far as, you know, five years to catch up everything. When you study these corridors, it's good to do the whole corridor and get it remapped. So what's the remapping do for you? Obviously, that gets you more usability of land and also controls your drainage. I think council may recall back, you know, that many years ago, we had significant problems with the Manley intersection and we've solved that now, all that water. Part of what we channelized and build these big structures does make things better. In addition to, we talked about, this is a $40,000 effort. The rest of the $85,000 goes to directly, the IGA calls out, we can use it towards some of the improvements on the viewpoint channel. Council may recall when we came in October, some of that particular netting to prevent erosion, that new channel we built along the viewpoint connector, that's where the money's going directly very soon with the approval of the IGA. In fact, the money's probably already been spent towards that particular effort. So once again, flood control money that's generated, we put it towards flood control mapping and design in addition to some construction projects to make stormwater management better. So that's what you have before you.
Thank you, Norm. Anything for Norm?
I do.
Councilman?
Yeah. Considering, okay, I get to see that almost every day, the viewpoint is, it's in my neighborhood. But there's a lot of brown dirt on the side, each side of the roadway. And on a windy day, it's not pleasant. Is there going to be a lot of landscaping being put in once the roadway's completed?
Not particularly landscape improvements at this point, expenditure there, but there is seeding that will go on as part of the final construction. So what you're seeing when we're, have construction in progress, we do have those straw waddles you see out there. You can see the dust palliative placed by the contractors requirement. So yes, there will be some seeding as a final when everything's done, as every project we have, that's part of the current design standards we implement. And it's native seed too, so it works at this elevation and drought tolerant at times.[1733.88]